I'd like to bring the meeting to order and welcome you all here and ask Carrie that role we call please. Fuller's here, Fosner's here, Disharier's here, Holzhauser's here, Humble's here, Reece here, Zouin.
Here.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the public participation portion of the meeting and we'll begin with Dr. Dearman with the superintendent's report.
All right. At this time, I'd like to recognize a couple staff members. The first being Stacy Combs, teacher at Hickory Grove. I was named the Junior Achievement of Central Illinois Teacher of the Month for September, so Ms. Combs would come forward and get her certificate. I would appreciate it. Next staff member is Natalie Lancer, teacher at Dunlap Gray, received the Memetic Foundation Scholarship Book Grant for $100, so thank you. November 15th, which is tomorrow, has been declared School Board Members Day in Illinois. This is an opportunity for us to thank our board members for their hard work and dedication. They volunteered countless hours of their time to ensure that Dunlap School District is providing the best possible education and learning environment for students and staffs. I want to thank them personally and on behalf of our administrators, teachers, staff, students, community, for all that they do. As a small token of our appreciation, we have certificates and a box of Fanning May chocolates for each of them. Let's give them a round of applause.
Do you want to help?
I'll go pass them on.
Sure. Then they get to smell them all night. They smell amazing.
We'll share.
Sharing is appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Some other items for me to share for your requests. We've received one FOIA request since our last meeting. That was submitted by Kevin O'Mara, Associate Professor at Concordia University in Chicago, asking for salary and benefit information on the current superintendent, so we provided that. District Leadership Team was held on October 23rd, and that was a combination of multiple people being there from different facets of the school community and district. We had some board members there, administrators there, teachers there, staff, parents, just trying to gather some ideas and information at this particular time. And then we'll meet again in January and start looking at some of those ideas and information that came forward and trying to put that together to formulate a plan. But it was very well attended and a lot of good information came out of that meeting. The 1920 calendar, usually like in November, people are approving their calendar for the next year. There's been significant changes this year in the way that the calendar is being done by the Illinois State Board of Education. So with that being said, it's not even available to submit at this point. It's still under development. ISBE Legal is going through it. Beth Kreider, who is a Dunlap person and is also the Regional Superintendent, has put together some information and has a workshop, a meeting with them just after Thanksgiving. Erin George McKenna, the Assistant Regional Superintendent, to go through that. I also got some information through LUDA. Basically, it's a good thing. I think it's going to give us some flexibility. And it's looking at the way that students are educated now versus the way they were in the past. I think the State Board is finally starting to recognize that students learn in different ways, especially with the technology component. So I'll have more information hopefully for you in December on that, but letting you know the reason why it hasn't been brought forward to this point, it's just not available yet. So it will be coming. If there are questions about the calendar, I cannot get specifics because I don't have them yet, but you can basically look at this year's calendar. It will be very similar. You can probably look at corresponding dates to get a rough idea of what we're anticipating. I've got a paper copy down, and it aligns pretty well to what we did for this current year, but it will change some. So the last thing I want to do is put out a calendar and then have to correct it and send out a revision. So I'm going to wait till I have all the information, all the facts. ISBE releases the public calendar in Iowa's and submit it through them, get that done, and then I'll bring it for public Google. Same thing with application for recognition of schools. I think that was due back in October. That's not even available. That has changed as well, and that does not require school board approval anymore. So all these things are being changed as we speak. Got a couple safe route to school grants going on. Jeremy is working on one at Hickory with the sidewalk. And then Jason Holmes and myself and multiple others are working on a larger one in conjunction with the village at Copperfield, where you cross right there, and we've gained some good traction on that. Jason's put in a tremendous amount of work in conjunction, primarily with Tracy at the city. And I think we're going to be okay to meet that deadline. You saw him out yesterday doing the vocability study with several people, so kudos to Mr. Holmes on taking that ball and running with it. And then we had a community forum. Teresa was there, Karen was there. That's just one of the things you have to do in order, it helps with the submission of the grant if you checked all the boxes. So we're checking all the boxes and we'll put it in and we'll see what happens. But it looks pretty good at this point. I think we're going to make it the deadline. The district website is under construction and looking in February to be unveiled. We've had several meetings with Ben King and his Technology Department as far as what that website's going to look like, some of the things that we would like to see changed. Some of the information on there is somewhat outdated, needs to be revised or eliminated. All those discussions are happening, so I know that's been in the works here for a while, but you have a deadline now, February. It will be rolled out. And that is all I have at this point.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'll move on to public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing no one. This will conclude the public participation portion of the meeting and we'll now move on to the information discussion items. School activity account reports are included in the board packet. Are there any questions? Okay. Information regarding the high school random drug testing for the month of October is available in the packet. Are there any questions? Ms. Bagby is here to present information regarding the gross anatomy lab opportunity for Dunlap High School students.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
I have Mary Ann Henry, our Science Department Chair, who's been a big part of helping with this information tonight, bringing this program. We also have Erin Barrington, who's been a big part of this as well in the Science Department, and Ashley C. Nor, one of our co-owners, is also in attendance tonight. We've had Amanda Young and Sarah Lou Schau, who have also been a part of this. And then also with the support of Dr. Dearman and Scott Adrian, kind of something we've been trying to work on. So I know, I've talked to some of you earlier this year about this opportunity that we started a few years ago over in Tremont, and I'm hoping like we can try and bring this here to Dunlap. Unity Point has been a big sponsor of this program in terms of the funding and whatnot, so that's why the title is as such. So, the cadaver lab. You see a couple pictures there of some students during the cadaver lab. There's nothing graphic in any of the pictures. I'm going to show you the promise. But what you can see here is the unique opportunity that students are getting through this opportunity. There's a med student up there in the right, top right, and a certified occupational hand therapist, working specifically on hand that day. Down at the bottom right is a pulmonologist that students are working with, and he is showing them some different aspects of the lung and some different procedures that they do in the hospital setting. So they're really getting a hands-on opportunity. These students are going to be the ones actually doing the dissections, doing some of these different skills and whatnot. And so they're working side by side with those medical professionals. And then I do have a picture of a bullet there as well. The hands-on, that opportunity is in one of the cadavers a couple of years ago. We actually found a bullet in one of the cadavers. And the opportunity this brought, we had a general surgeon there that night, and I don't know how this happened, but a retired detective there that night. So the conversation that we were able to have about forensics from the law enforcement perspective and then the general surgery, what happens when they get a gunshot victim into the hospital or something like that, what do they do? So they're using these opportunities to benefit their future medical career. And then also working with medical students, getting to have those conversations about applying to colleges. What does that look like? What do these students do or what were their struggles that they faced and how did they overcome them? So it's hosted in Peeken at Unity Point. Some just other pictures there. It's Wednesday from 7:00 to 8:30, Saturdays from 9:00 to 10:30, and it goes for about 16 weeks during the spring semester. And the students, about 30 students, get, are allowed into the program. We're working with three different cadavers. So it's about 10 students per cadaver, and that number tends to work pretty well. We have a picture there in the bottom left as students taking their midterm exam, where they're going through a lab practical setting with about 80 different tissues that have been pinned, and they're going through to see how much they have learned over the course of the semester. And it was amazing how well our students did this last year. That's something we kind of grew from previous years. We also take some different field trips over to different emergency rooms, radiology departments, the Jump Trading Center at OSF, have some connections over there. They let us come in after hours and they give us a tour and we get to go through a lot of their facilities. So that's just a little bit about it. So which students are we specifically looking at here and across the area? So for here, senior Dunlap students and a couple of the criteria we're looking at, their maturity and their responsibility. There was a question that was sent our way this afternoon about the selection process, and maturity and responsibility are going to be one of those, the number one thing, to be honest with you. We're working with someone who's donated their body to science, and the responsibility that our students, especially during their teenage years, it's a big responsibility. This is someone's loved one. This is someone who has donated their body, and that must be taken very seriously. So that is something. Their coursework in upper-level biology, AP Chem, AP Bio, anatomy courses, future medical career plans, and another very, very big thing, especially due to the interest, is their commitment to be able to attend all the sessions. If we have a student who has a certain activity every Saturday morning that they're unable to, to make it, that takes a spot from someone else. So that commitment is really, really important. Other benefits, college and scholarship applications, it's a pretty unique opportunity. Being able to, they get letters of recommendation from us as faculty here at the high school and whatnot, but be able to get a letter of recommendation from a doctor when they're in high school already can set them apart. Opportunities for shadowing, some of our surgeons or other practitioners who come in are very willing to let students come into their office and set up those opportunities. And then, this is a very unique opportunity. We only know of two in the state of Illinois, across the nation. I'm not sure, I can't speak to that, but it's very unique for high schoolers to be able to participate in such opportunities. We have some physical therapists, nurse practitioners who come in, and they're not even getting the full-on opportunity to dissect a cadaver themselves during their medical training. There are a lot of times taking cadavers that med students have dissected, and then they're just going back through and going through what their work was and being able to look at. They're not getting the full experience. So this really does set them kind of apart there. So the Dunlap students, how does this impact us? That picture there is the meeting we held last Friday, and those were the Dunlap students who attended. Due to some various field trips, there's about seven kids who've emailed me in addition to who's in that room. So there was a good amount of interest. We were very pleased with the interest that day. And the unfortunate part about it, we talked with the students about it, is we're only going to be able to take about five. It could be a little more than that, but we're participating with other schools. A lot of schools in the Middle I-N-I Conference or in the Tazewell, Peoria County areas. And a lot of that's going to be based on enrollment and size, how many students each school can send. So it's going to be competitive. We talked about the students, to the students about that, what that could look like, and the competitiveness of the medical field, and what that could look like. So positive from it. I really would like to be able to bring this opportunity to our Dunlap students. I think it could be really great for them. But also, where could we go for future growth? We have a great amount of interest in that room, and we haven't even brought this program here yet, and word hasn't fully, I would say, gotten out. So what does that turn into? And I guess I just wanted to let you, one, know that this is an opportunity for our students, get any feedback, and then let you know I would like to see this grow, and just kind of get that information out there. So that's what I have for you. Any questions?
No. Is there a possibility in the future of having a Dunlap-only class?
I would love to make something like that happen, yes.
As long as we have a place to keep the cadaver.
Yeah, and that would be a conversation. Part of this would be looking at what resources do we have in our community? So the facility we use in Peeken, Unity Point donated one of their old buildings that they're currently not using. And so we use that building, and they've been very gracious. One of the doctors I've worked with on this program, he's on a hospital board in the area, and he just had a presentation this week, and they're like, what else can we help donate? What else can we do? So establishing some of those connections, seeing what our resources are in the Dunlap area and Peoria area, and see what our growth could look like over here too. Have a thought.
Very nice.
Very good work.
Thank you. So how will you pick the five?
So we're going to have a committee of faculty members. It'll be very similar to how we do NHS as well, from what I understand. We're going to have a committee, and we're going to go through their applications. Students had to get letters of recommendation forms filled out by teachers attesting to their maturity and their responsibility, looking at their transcripts and their grades. They also had to write an essay about why they are interested and how this is going to benefit their future career plans. And we're going to take a look at that culminating piece of evidence, all of that together, and we're going to have to make some probably very difficult decisions, to be honest with you.
Yeah, you are.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
You have to say a quick question. What commitment to resources from the district is there now for what you have? And then do you have any idea of what it would take to do our own program? Are you looking at that?
So the commitment right now, from the family perspective of the students, is $130 a fee. What that pays for is their textbook and their lab coat, which is a very nominal fee. The district, in terms of being able to help put up for proctors, it's about $200 per participant. And all of the school districts on this list have, either in the past, are willing to put up that. We're looking at trying to either lower that or get that gone with some of the donations and resources. And what that pays for is teachers to come help proctor, supply costs, things like that. The cost of the cadavers themselves is completely donated by Unity Point as well, and that's about a $10,000 cost. So that's fairly significant. The entire cost of the entire program is, it's sustaining right now, is about $27,000 with a very nominal amount from districts and from individual families. We've had some districts on this list who have paid that $130 for students based on need at home, and they want them to be able to participate and not have finances be a hinder. So we also encourage that as well, and we find scholarships or opportunities for them to be able to attend.
Is there, is there credit given for this?
There is not credit given. I've had that question before. That is something we've looked into. We've done this, it's something we could look into for the future. It's been done more of a learning-for-learning sake type of opportunity in being able to immerse the students and give them opportunities where the stress, a lot of these kids are already in a lot of AP and honors and dual-credit classes, and they're taking the time on their Wednesday nights and Saturday mornings to come, and they take it very seriously. And we didn't want to put one more high-stakes thing on them at this time, but it is something we have thrown around and considered, and there is some interest from some of the local academic institutions for that potential for the future. That'd be another growth opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. This looks like a great program.
Thank you.
Information regarding the 2018 school report cards is included in the board packet. Mrs. Bowman will present information regarding the summative designations.
Okay, so this, the report card information or the qualification under ESSA changed quite a bit as far as, I'm trying to get the right one here. As far as what was able to qualify us for these designations, because they're brand-new. So let me just find where I'm hitting present on here. I apologize.
She said the button over the remote. Lower, right.
There we go. Okay, there it is. Perfect. So the goals are kind of outlined in this graphic here, and so they're really taking a look, the state is going to take a look at the whole child, and making sure that they're examining that whole piece of what had, the shift was from no child left behind to ESSA. So in these designations, the goals of the state were to make sure that by the end of the term of, the term of ESSA, we have 90% or more of third graders reading at or above grade level, fifth graders meeting those math expectations, making sure the ninth graders are on track to graduate, and then that college and career readiness was a very important piece too. So they're examining things in a very, very different way than they had been done before. So the indicators for this school year are 75% academic, 25% more school quality or student success items. So they're taking a look at proficiency, so that's where you see that 10% piece. So they still take a look at that five-point scale related to a PARC when it comes to the K8 piece, and 10% ELA, 10% math, looking at those levels four and five. But then there's also a growth component that is a part of the accountability piece, and that accounts for 50% of that total. They also take a look at our ELs and their access testing. And then starting next year, there's going to be a little shift. They're going to add the science assessment in, and then they'll back that ELA and math down to 7.5 each to make up that total 75%. They're also taking a look at that student absenteeism, climate surveys, and there will be a pre-K2 indicator and then a different elementary and middle school indicator as well. High school is fairly similar, except instead of PARC, they're taking a look at SAT when it comes to those proficiency scores. But then they're not calculating a growth score at the high school level, they're taking a look at that graduation rate, and that made up the 50% there. Same thing then with the shift in where that'll go with those proficiency scores. Their quality indicators are a little bit different. The absenteeism is in there, but those ninth-grade students on track is a big piece, the college and career ready, and then once again, the climate survey. So all of that put together creates this new rating system that is exemplary, commendable, underperforming, or lowest performing. And so I'm not going to read all of this to you, but you can see to be exemplary, you need, your performance needs to be in the top 10% of schools. And to make sure that you're in that exemplary or commendable, you can't have any underperforming subgroups as that comes to the total. So this year, our summative ratings, we had all of our schools that either are exemplary or commendable. There was some concern that we were maybe going to have some underperforming subgroups initially with those initial rankings, but those growth scores really pulled us out of that level. And so it's something our buildings are very aware of though, and they're keeping an eye on to make sure that we're providing the level of support we need for all of our subgroups. But it was great to see all of our designations come out in this area. So then, the school report card, and I know in the past I've kind of walked you through, and in order for me to click on this, I think I'm going to have to escape out here. I've walked you through a lot of the different items on there. I'm not going to go through everything with you, but I wanted to at least show you how you could get to it. And it doesn't, it's going to open. Here we come. You can also find, all of this is on our district website. If you go to the district tab and scroll down to school report cards, this link is on there along with the PDF files of anything there. But the report card in and of itself looks pretty similar. This is the district page. You can take a look. It just has the overall summative designation levels now for all of our buildings. But from this page, you can go and click on all of the schools in the district. I love when it's not your own computer. It just never works quite the way you want it to. But you could click on any one of our buildings then and get the information. You can click on the academic progress piece, and then it's going to pull up all of the PARC information. It's going to pull up participation rates. I know we're always tracking our eighth graders passing Algebra I. That piece is on there as well. So there is a plethora of information on this page as well that anybody, it's all public information that you can go to. There's some great features. You can look at PDFs. You can do, like, let's say you wanted to look at the eighth graders passing Algebra I, you can just look at this year. You can also look at historical numbers. It'll open for me. It's not going to cooperate for me. But that's all there at your fingertips too. So I guess, are there any specific questions you guys had about the report card?
So PARC, we're not doing this year, correct?
It's not called PARC. It's called the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, IAR. It's going to be very similar questions, is what they're telling us. We don't have specifics on it yet. It's a new platform. Basically, they didn't like the timeframe in which PARC was getting results back to us in. Initially, it was promised that we were going to have results so much quicker. That didn't happen. So the bid was awarded to a company. However, the other company that did not win the bid is contesting the bid, which is why we don't have information yet on dates or what the platform is going to look like.
And it, we won't, when we look year to year, we won't really be able to compare?
They're saying the test items are going to be similar, that it's going to be the same.
Oh, and so we will be able to look?
They're saying we'll be able to. I'd like to see the first-round results to know, is it truly comparable or not? You know, do the reports look the same? We can see right now, you know, you can see test items and banks of questions, but it'll be interesting to see. They're saying the content should be the same though, so it should be comparable. Good questions. Others?
I was just wondering, as far as the, when you look at the schools that are commendable, and you take a look at the subgroup data and try to see where you have the, you know, the gaps?
Right.
And what, what do we, you know, what's the process, I guess, going forward to make sure that we're putting whatever resources we need to put in those specific places? Or are those building administrators able to ask for help in those areas?
Yeah, they've all been very diligent at tracking their data and taking a look at breaking down those subgroups. And yeah, they come with different requests. Our two buildings that were originally targeted as possibly being underperforming because of subgroups, there is additional funding that we're getting through the state this year that we're able to put towards different programs. So we're really, they're in the planning process for that right now. There is a large quality framework rubric that they are filling out with their instructional leadership teams. They're actually working with other feeder buildings as well to make sure they're gathering good input on that, and then some decisions will be made based off of those rubrics.
And in addition to the funding that we're receiving, is there additional funding that, you know, from within the district? Like if you need an additional to lower the class sizes or to attack any, any specific issue, are we looking at, you know?
There could be. It just varies. We haven't gone that far yet because we need to get through the initial planning process, but yes, that could definitely be an option.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Heather.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Dearman will now present information regarding redistricting of the middle schools.
Well, the construction valley, which we'll be finishing up and looking at next year, redistricting, had put together a plan. With that being said, we have some goals. Obviously, Dunlap knows crowded, it's overcrowded at this point. What we wanted to do is try and, and I'm not going to sit here and read these two, you can read for yourself, but... We're adding on with the three waves and then on three jets, we'll add space there. So we're going to have room there to do some addition with people. If you look at this, the question then comes in, you know, some people are going to have to move from Dunlop Mill to Dunlop Valley. And what do we do with those students? At this point, what we're looking at is if you're a current seventh grader at Dunlop Mill and you want to finish your elementary career at Dunlop Mill, you have the option to do so. Now, that option is, one, is contingent upon if your parents want to provide the transportation, the whole field, run individual buses where the different people choose to stick there. And I've got numbers on how many people that impact, how many students that impact here a little bit later. The other part of this is, and this would hit me if my son was in seventh grade at this time and goes out. If your son is in a child subgrade, it'll be going in eighth grade if he wanted to stay, but then you have coming into the sixth grade, you could potentially have one at Dunlop Valley, one at Dunlop Mill. As a parent, that could be a nightmare. You don't want that. So the suggestion would be let the seventh graders that want to stay, stay. If they have a sibling, they can stay with that seventh grader until they complete their eighth grade year, and then they redistrict back to the other school. You have to draw the line somewhere or excuse people, getting out families in the space of kids, people forever. But at least that would keep that parent in that year from moving to different locations. So that's what we're looking at. We have two options we're going to present. These are not set in stone. We're going to look at, listen to suggestions and ideas. I'd like to thank Mrs. Bowman. She helped me with the software. She's much better than I am, so thank you to her. And well, because we want to look, okay, you know, the goal is, we don't want to do this every year. Is there a way we can do this, impact as few people as possible and have it stand the test of time, at least foreseeable in the short term future? So option A, take the wilder weight students and move them into EMS. Dunlop grade rich, you are already there, so we're drawing a line, moving one building of schools. And what that looks like as far as the math, there's your boundaries, your capable versus your capability. And this is what it looks like for numbers. I mean, use decision inside, which is the company that has been used for forecasting student growth projections for a long time here at the district. This is what happened to Kanan. To me, the sweet spot is kind of divide your window. I mean, we've got to go out ten years, but wild things can happen in ten years. Five years to me is much more realistic because things change. You look what happened to, how years ago we got, when we saw the company. This company kind of prides itself on being within two percent. So these numbers are fairly accurate unless there's some type of anomaly that happens. So if you look at next year, the top one is Dunlop Valley Middle School. Their enrollment would be at five hundred and forty students in 2019, and Dunlop Mill would be at five oh eight. And if you follow it across, at the top, five forty, five twelve, five thirteen, five hundred, five oh seven. Look at the bottom, five eighteen, five fourteen, five forty-five, five fifty-six, five twenty-nine. Not perfectly balanced, but pretty well close. So that achieves the goal of keeping themselves balanced and impacting as few people as possible. All right, there was discussion, pushes we need to get everyone, just redraw the lines, and not completely, we don't want to do that. So if this accomplishes that goal, that's option number one. Option number two, or option B, Dan. Again, here's a map, if you're a visual person drawing the boundary lines, and then here are the numbers. Banner, not quite as balanced as you can see, if you look at the numbers. With decision inside, some of the information they gave, the growth in the future is, and wild, we're thinking no growth in the banner area. So that's why these numbers are what they are. And the concern is, you start to see it flip the other way, and you start to get out of balance. Again, that's ten years away, but even in 2023, kind of that sweet spot, you're starting to see a pretty good discrepancy there. But it's close, it works, we'll overthink targets and update loan capacities at the school. Seven, ten, eighty capacity at Dunlop Valley is done. So if you're looking at Dunlop Valley, which is the top one, no matter what major, well, their capacities, there's still room there for growth. I've got either building under these scenarios. We did take into account demographic information. So we looked at three hundred and eighty percent census rates. If we go with option A, which is wilder weight, between the two buildings, the difference in the three hundred and eighty percent rate is six tenths of one percent between the two, the majority of them. If we go with option B, which is Dana, still very close, two point six percent. So either option to me, that doesn't really make much of a difference. With busing, top P, the first option for him, wilder weight, would be easier, more efficient, but do they either one work? And then, with that being said, you know, if you were asking what, in my opinion, what my recommendation would be based on numbers, wilder weight seems like a logical choice at this point just because of the numbers. What we don't know, or what we need to do, is look at some of these other numbers. And here's what I talked about. Here's the number of kids, if you look at the top options, they're both displaced, about the same number of kids. So either option, the number of kids that are going to be displaced is about the same. And then the grandfathering, that's kind of a bit of an unknown. How many kids are going to exercise that option to stay? We don't, we'll find out, we'll put the timeline out there. We have to know for staffing reasons. If we choose to go that route, we'll set a deadline soon. We have to know, like, is there union issues involved with this? Says we're going to have voluntary transfers, does it mention specific to that? So, you know, we can't even get this ball rolling. But the next step, we'd like to put a survey out of parents, of affected communities. So this is some feedback. No, no one is as smart as all of us. This is the best option that we have come up with at this point, or maybe a better option out there, we're seeing. So we're going to pull and find out and see what they have to say. Then I would recommend to the board, maybe we come together as a board and have a work session, over the information that comes back out of the survey, if it is. And then we'd like to have a decision in assembly for the board. Because of the fact that, like I said, the community issues, he got in, a deadline on parents, a deadline to decide what they're going to do, they sort of go through that process of what do those transfers look like? You can't have any tighter, math department, if Dunlop Mill decided we want to transfer to Valley, you have to keep those balanced, all those things would have to be worked through those things. So that's the proposal we have on the table at this point. Questions you have?
Thank you. Okay. No questions from anyone here? Okay. There's information regarding destruction of closed session audio recordings. That's included in the packet. Are there any questions? Okay, this will conclude the information discussion items segment of the meeting, and we'll now move on to the consent agenda. Are there any clarifications or discussion regarding items on the consent agenda?
I did have a question about the PE exemption.
Heather, what, what is your preference on that?
So, the question was about, I think I'm wrong, about the seven school classes with no study hall for students. And the purpose in that is it's the only the students who, let's say I am a football player and I want to exempt out of PE, but I don't want to take a semester course, I want to take a year-long course, but I'm only a one semester sports player. That's where that full load, full hour came into play because it's really, it's not the way we typically do it. It doesn't affect anything currently. If a current student has their schedule and they're in PE and they have a study hall early release, and they are a football player and they just want to take a semester course, there's no change to that. It's just for those year-long courses.
And I guess my concern was, the way I read it, it looks that if a student takes a fall sport and a second semester sport, that they're also required that. And so I was just wondering if we could put in some language that says, a student athlete who's in one sport or in sports for one semester may request to be exempt from physical education for the entire school year regardless of the semester, only if they register for a full academic schedule.
So you're looking under provision one, point B.
Point B.
You're looking at?
I think that's what the meaning of it is to have it only applied to a child who's in one sport, but the way it's read, it just says student athlete. So I just worry about that student who has a...
Would it help just to put a space in between those first two, to make a, I mean, the beginning of B is almost the same as A. It says a student athlete may request a waiver from physical education during the semester that their sport competes. This exemption can be utilized as a study hall or semester course. First point. Then it's almost, if we make that a next point, a student athlete may request to be exempt from physical education for the entire school year regardless, maybe instead of regardless of the semester, regardless of single semester participation?
Right.
You see, would that clarify it?
Yeah, or a student athlete who's only participating in one semester. Either way, I think.
Okay.
I just don't want it to be really hard on a kid who takes more than one.
Absolutely. Yeah, and that wasn't the intent. It was just, yeah.
I understand that.
No, but it needs to be clear because it is, if we can't explain it and understand it, that's not going to be good.
And I like the addition of the paragraph.
Uh-huh. To space those out. You just want to, do you want to pull this from consent and bring it back next month with the language changes?
Or we can, is, can we agree to that with the language?
You can approve pending the addition. Okay. Is everyone okay with that?
It'll be reflected in the...
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's fine.
I'm fine.
Okay.
It's good.
You okay with that?
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay, so when we read the motion, do we say that?
Yeah.
So are there any other questions, discussion items regarding the consent agenda? Okay, can I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda? And did you, when you make the motion, add that change?
Can you just say pending changes?
The language change we just discussed?
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented, pending the PE change to section B for student, as discussed at the board, being second.
It's been moved by Abby Humble, seconded by Cheryl Blue. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Humbles?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Polshauser?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zaln?
Aye.
Motion carries. The board will now move on to action items. The bill list is included in the board packet. Are there any questions? Could I please have a motion to approve payment of the bills?
I move to approve payment of the bills in the amount of four million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents as presented.
It's been moved by Brian Zaln, seconded by Abby Humbles. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Zaln?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Polshauser?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Blue? Motion carries. Information regarding the 2018 tentative tax levy is included in the board packet. Dr. Dearman, are you wanting to present?
Yep.
Okay. Dr. Dearman will present information on this. Thank you.
This was a different setup, so I appreciated that. It was a different way to, to look at it from our normal.
Heather messed up the computer.
I take both as well.
All right, tax rate again. This is restated. This is different than what you're used to seeing. I saw when you had been presented before, and it was fine, but there was a lot of budget stuff in there. And this is levy, not budget. That's a different conversation. So this is very specific to the levy process. So what I, Don, is calling back, you know, you're going to need to know where you've been before you go forward. So kind of looking back at establishing trend data as far as EAP within the district. And I think it pretty clearly states what's going on here. As far as the EAP calculation, that is not something that the district calculates and provides, like, the council office. So those numbers are provided to us and the local numbers we work with. So you can see that kind of a little decline this year, three point one six. The reason for that, that I was told, is the cattle homes not selling for what they used to do, because of different factors. We have some low asset property, just a little taxing set. And then we have some limited line of infrastructure for previous issues. So those are the three contributing factors to the decline. As far as the tax rate history of the district, I'll go back to 2010, just to give you an idea of where those rates come from. 2018 has an asterisk because that's what we're proposing, the proposed mountain tentative levy. If you look at it, it is lower. And you may be worried, it's nuts. If he went down, lower in taxes, that doesn't make any sense. Well, I know this is hard to see because there's a lot of numbers. But reality, there's only three funds that you can really manipulate, so to speak. If you look at the education fund going back to 2010, it's maxed out at two point seven. We cannot go above that, not voter referendum, maybe out to certain degrees. But that hasn't changed in quite a while, as you can see, it's been sort of static. Same thing with operation and maintenance, certainly. Again, I'm going to sell your college, you can see the numbers for yourself. Your fire bill, I R F, or really the only three that you can manipulate. You have a bond payment, we've got to separate that out of the bottom. But that's a fixed number, you're told what that is, and the levy for those money, that's a fixed number that's provided to us as well. But as far as the I R F, fire, you got a tour, you levy for what you need. You can only spend those money to get those funds. So it's not like you can take I R F money and say, you know, maybe some operations and maintenance, spend it over there. It's not like a checkbook, it doesn't work that way. They're specifically designated funds. So if you look at the different rates, you see a total, I just got right to the corner or not? Oh, yes it is. Oh, I just looked. The total, the first total, three point nine eight. Last year's three point nine six, if you're out, two cents different. But the big change, why did it go down? The bond rate went down. The bond rate is going from point five eight seven six to point five zero one five. So I call, that's real handy, who we work with, why is it a big drop? Well, that was Dunlop designed, when the bonds were originally issued, that we would see this dip this year. So if there were other smaller or other projects we wanted to work on within the district, there would be some room there within that bonding capacity, that bonds could be issued and not hit the overall rates, it's a huge jump. These are all higher to the county school facility sales tax form group. So now we have that money coming in, that's paying for those projects. So we saw a dip, and there's no projects out there, I don't think those folks can replace them now. So that's why we have the dip this term here. It will roll up in my estimation. I assume the EAP is at standard, and next year it's going to stay flat. I do have a meeting with the Torrey Association of Builders to get some more information on what they perceive of the market, but the word I'm getting, it's somewhat stabilized in our area, so I'm just assuming flat. It will just come on, so you're not going to see a huge spike. But that's right today. To give you all information about the tax levy process, the levy is a request, you can pledge for whatever you want. If you go five percent or more, you have a true taxation, you're going to be five percent over what you got in the year before. So I had the levy, it's not like when you're younger, you go out, you're fresh, and you needed ten bucks, but you go to dad and say, Dad, I need twenty dollars, you owe my friends. What dad will say? No, here's ten, you just got what you need. You don't ask for... but we're not getting it, it's somewhat stabilized in our area, so I'm assuming flat. It will just come up, so you're not going to see a huge spike, but that's variable today. To give you all information about the tax levy process, the levy is a request, you can pledge for whatever you want. If you go 5% or more than that, true to taxation, you're getting 5% over what you got in the year before. So I had to levy, it's not like when you're younger, you're going out on your friends, you go to, and you needed 10 bucks, but you go to dad and say, Dad, I need $20 to go out with my friends. What dad will say? No, here's 10, but you just got what you need, you always ask for more. You always levy for more, to make sure that you capture the dollars you're entitled to. But what you're extending is your actual receipt. So last year, what we actually received is about $42 million, that's a change. And for this year, levying or asking for 42,359,22, the next slide will probably give a little more information on that as we go through the next slideshow. Do I think we'll get that? No, I think not. That's what we're called, balloon levy, I don't have any memory. What I predict, worst case scenario, is the 40 million, that's, you know, strictly the number of students by the assessors office. They're going to be off a little bit, but not much. To get that 42,359, they're going to have to be off by 0.6%. Not going to happen, you're talking about $60 million, they're not obviously. So we'll fall somewhere between that 42 and 40. But reality is we're probably going to get less this coming year than we got for the term, just because the bond is short. So what's this mean to the taxpayer and our budget? Well, the overall tax rate is dropping, primarily due to bonds, changing the lock rate. What's this mean to the homeowner within the district? Well, if you're living in a $300,000 home, your tax will go down, and these are all, yes, but it's, but it'll be close, about 75%. So not a huge difference, but a little bit of tax relief. And on the other side of that, you know, we are probably going to be looking at it in the increased revenue situation just because the EAD went down. It's unfortunate, but it is, you have to look at, when did the district gain from all this? In those earlier years, when I started those EADs, I think one was like 5.27%. This district is not tax capped. So if you're tax capped, great, you can't get less than what you got the year before, so it's not going to go down. But you're also stuck in CPI, you're never going to get that 5%. So this district was able to capture all those hours for all those years. But when you're in a negative situation like you're in now, it's not beneficial. But it'd be more than made up on previous years when we captured that growth. So that's the situation that we're in right now. And you can see this, you got better eyes. This is something that we're used to seeing, so I'm going to ahead and put it in this format because you've seen this before. But basically what it shows is on the left, that is the EAD rate as presented to us from the county assessor, not ballooned at all, just straight as is. And that's what we would expect to get, and that's where your $42,164,000 comes from on the previous line. And then the one on the right, I get what you call a balloon levy. If you're off, Mr. Assessor, by some, I want to make sure I get all the money I needed in my head fund. So originally, it was $24,170,000.
That's where our head fund's going to go down by.
I say, you know what, if you're off by that...
Yeah.
I'm asking 26 minutes. So if you're off, maybe it was 25 there. If I only asked for 24, that's all it could get. But if I asked for 26, it turns out you're 25 now. So those, I, it played into some of those mayhem, just to make sure we don't leave money on the table. But reality, we're not going to get those costs. You know, like I said, if I ask for 20, I'm not going to get it.
You done?
I think I'm done. Question we have?
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, information regarding the resolution to intervene in the property tax appeal, board assessment appeal is included in the board packet. Are there any questions? Oh, sorry. Okay, is there a motion to approve the levy?
I move to approve the 2018 tentative tax levy as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Abby Humble, seconded by, was that Cheryl? Teresa? Teresa Holshauser? Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Humbles?
Aye.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zalyn?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, there's information regarding the resolution to intervene in the property tax appeal board assessment appeal. It's included in the packet. Are there any questions? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I move to approve resolution number 18-19, semi-colon, one, 19-1, to authorize intervention in property tax appeal board assess, assessment appeal, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Brian Zalyn, seconded by Beth Ree. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Zalyn?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Humbles?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Motion carries. This concludes the action items portion of the meeting and the board will now move into closed session. Could I please have a motion to adjourn to closed session? Is there a second?
Okay.
It's been moved by Abby Humble, seconded by Cheryl Blue. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Humbles?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Zalyn?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned to closed session. The human resources consent agenda. Make motion for the human resource consent agenda. It's been moved by Abby Humble, seconded by Don Bozeman. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Humbles?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Zalyn?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Holshauser?
Aye.
Ree?
Aye.
Motion carries. Could I have a motion to approve the closed session minutes?
I move to approve the closed session minutes of the regular board meeting, number 17, 2018, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Teresa Holshauser, seconded by Cheryl Blue. Is there a discussion? Roll call vote, please. Holshauser?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Bozeman?
Aye.
Disharun?
Aye.
Humbles? Ree?
Aye.
Zalyn?
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
It's been moved by Cheryl Blue, seconded by Teresa Holshauser. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries.
7:30.